We'll call the meeting to order for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, October 29, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator as well. Please stand for the pledge. We'll start with the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle is absent, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First order of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 15, 2024, and B, which is a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 5, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do we have a motion in second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, which are Resolutions C through F, which the Board can take in block if desired. Motion's been adjourned by Rogers, second by Morgan. Is there anybody here that wanted to comment on any of the resolutions C through F? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That concludes Board of Equalization. We'll jump into Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle is absent, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items 1A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 15, 2024, and B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, October 29, 2024. Do I have a motion in second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump into our consent agenda, items A through N. Do I have a motion in second for discussion? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. We'll go into discussion. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
On Item B, I thought I saw somebody from the Sheriff's Office here. There we are. Just for public information purposes, Item B is make official the memorandum of understanding between Offutt Air Force Base, AFB-55 Security Forces Squadron, and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office for mutual aid and informational sharing for fiscal year 2025. And I believe Chief Deputy Rinn is here. If you could just give us some background for the record, the public doesn't really get the backup documents on this, so I'd like them to be aware.
Good morning. So, the Sheriff's Office has a longstanding tradition or history of partnering with our metro communities to include Offutt Air Force Base. Over the years, they have a investigative squadron as well as the Air Force Office of Special Investigations. We've had a number of incidents over the years of my career where military members become involved with off-site or off-base criminal incidents or intelligence-type incidents that are of noteworthy, and this is our agreement to, for information control for them. Some of these people have varying levels of security control that they need to know right away whether or not someone is under investigation or has been involved in an incident. And conversely, there's also a great number of facilities available on Offutt Air Force Base as far as their gym ranges, things of that nature, both in Bellevue and then some off-site locations that they like to train and co-locate with us, and we've taken advantage of those from time to time, and they're pretty helpful for us as well.
This arrangement has been in place for some time?
Yes, sir.
So, this is a renewal of an ongoing relationship?
That's correct.
Do we have these formal understandings with, like, the Sarpy County or the Potawatomi County regional local law enforcement?
Yes, there's an interlocal in place, which involves all of the Douglas County and Omaha metro area ones for mutual aid, investigative support, information sharing, access to resources within reason for training and for, in case of short manning, if we need to cover them or they need to cover us.
So, this allows us for closer collaboration in the metropolitan area of all of our public safety law enforcement agencies?
That's correct.
Great. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That concludes consent agenda. We'll jump into recognitions and proclamations, Section 3. We have Item A, Resolution Observing Operation Green Light in honor of our nation's veterans. I will toss it to my colleague, Commissioner Borgeson, to introduce.
Thank you, and with me today is our Veteran Service Officer. So, after I read the resolution, if he'd like to say anything, I welcome him to come forward, but we do this every year during Veterans Week, and I'll read the resolution. Whereas the residents of Douglas County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Douglas County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas the studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas the active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas this board appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that with the designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, this board hereby declares from November 4 through November 11 as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our former service members and the men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, this board hereby encourages its residents in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in the window of their residence or place of business dated this 29th day of October, 2024, and I move to approve.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Rogers.
And I don't know if Benson wants to say a few words. Good morning.
Morning. Benson, I'm with Veteran Services, and just briefly, Chairman Commissioners, on behalf of veterans and service members at home stationed abroad, we definitely thank you for your support, also to the local residents and local businesses that are lighting green their facilities and their homes. We thank them for their support as well. Of special note, the pedestrian bridge on November 8, everyone likes to see that bridge lit up, and it will be on November 8. Also, Valley City has confirmed their participation, as well as Bailey Point Bridges Trust, Physicians Mutual, the Riverfront, Exorbit Village Tower, Midtown Crossing Electric Billboard, and also the Building Commission. So, once again, thank you for your support and your leadership. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Benson, for the work that you and your staff do during this. It's maybe small piece of recognition for our veterans, but it is pretty cool to drive around and see things lit up and the houses lit up green and for us to show their support. So, I would just encourage any commissioner or anybody to any business or their own home to put a green light in their porch light or window. So, thank you very much for what you do, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in second on the table. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump into our presentations. We have two today. The first one, Item A, is Introduction to the Police and Fireman's Insurance Association and Related Benefits, to be described by Chief Deputy Rinn.
Good morning again. Some months ago, I was introduced to Jeff Warnock of the Police and Fireman's Insurance Association. He asked for a few moments of my time to describe an alternate or additional insurance benefit that was uniquely catered to those stressors involved with employment as police and fire. I certainly listened to the presentation and felt it would, and this career field, as we know, is unique to many people in that the stressors and the toll it takes on people mentally and physically create different and unique and sometimes increased medical problems, psychological problems, for which insurance is needed or different options are needed for payment. And also, there's a kinship and a fraternity, that aspect of being recognized by different organizations that helps the career field advance and helps people with their longevity. With that, I, excuse me, Mr. Warnock asked if he could speak to some of our members. I actually forwarded him to the FOP Lodge for one of their meetings, and when he spoke to them, and they indicated that they have a number of people that are interested in participating in this program. Really, why we're here this morning is to have a very brief introduction to the program, why it would be beneficial specifically for law enforcement and fire, and I don't believe there's any action items today, but if you have questions as to what exactly we're asking for, I know that there are avenues that persons can either pay direct through their own pocket, or they can, if approved, use the county payroll system to have something deducted, and I think that's kind of the nature of our visit this morning. With that, I'll introduce Mr. Warnock and his associate to give you a brief presentation. I believe you had some handouts, which you may have already.
Good morning. My name's Jeff Warnock. My address is 8618 South 98th Circle in La Vista, Nebraska, 68128. You may have some handouts that the chief passed out. Just a quick introduction of me. I'm a 20-year, 21-year veteran of the Omaha Police Department. Was retired in 2020. First six years of my career, I spent in northeast and northwest Omaha. As you might know, that is probably the busiest part of the city. After that, I spent 10 years as a detective and detective and accident reconstruction in the traffic unit. Most of my, the main part of that job is obviously fatality, accidents, and personal, severe personal injury accidents and city accidents, but what took most of my time is detective for hit-and-runs and other traffic-involved crimes. The last five years, I was on the motorcycle selective enforcement, where we did dignitary, dignitary escorts, parade escorts, and traffic control. The last six years of my career, I was introduced to police and fire insurance through a retiring lieutenant. He was looking to hand it off since he was moving out of state. I took over for that, trained, and I did that for the six years. At that point, I was asked to join the Home Office in Carmel, Indiana. Went there, became Vice President of the company, and was there for four and a half years. I was hoping to do it a little bit longer, but life has its own changes due to some deaths in the family. My wife and I decided that we wanted to come back and have, stay closer to family, so we moved back to Omaha. But I wanted to stay with, with Police and Fire Insurance, otherwise known as PFIA. So, I became the rep again. I took it over. The person that took my spot when I went to the Home Office, they were looking to, they were too busy, they wanted to hand it off, so I took it over again. At that point, I talked with Chief Deputy Rinn and asked him if we could talk to Douglas County Sheriff's Department. We are already in Omaha, La Vista, and Papillion, and we're working for Bellevue, Council Bluffs, and both Douglas and Sarpy Counties. So, little bit about the business. Police and Fire, they started in 1913 by police and fire officers and firefighters. The company is run by solely police, fire, and corrections. Anybody that is associated with the company is either current or retired police, fire. The president is retired firefighter from Buffalo, New York. We have a vice, senior vice president, he's from Indianapolis, and now the new vice president that took my spot is from Indianapolis. Excuse me. We're a fraternal, not-for-profit organization, and then we give out different fraternal benefits as long, as well as products to police, fire, and corrections. The main, the main thing we do is, obviously, we're fraternal, we try to give out as much, many benefits as we can. I know I've got a limited amount of time, so I'm trying to hurry through this, I'm sorry. Some of the benefits that we have, we have what's called an uninsurable child. If we have, if you are a member of Police and Fire, if you have a child that is due to some sort of medical reason, they are uninsurable, we will give them a $5,000 policy. Okay? I'm sorry, that's the $10,000 policy. It's 10,000. Just, just because you are a member of Police and Fire Insurance. Okay? We have a family fraternal, which is if, if you have a child and it lives to the eighth day, to the 59th day, we will give them a $5,000 life insurance policy. No matter what their condition is, if they can, we will do that. If they make it to the 60th day, we will convert that to a $10,000 policy. That is, that is a free benefit that we give all of our members. We have an orphans income and scholarship. If something should happen to one of our members and their spouse and their, and their children are orphaned, we, we will pay the person in charge of raising them, we'll pay them a certain amount, depending on how old the child is. We raise that anywhere from $150 to $300 a month, do that. Once they turn 18, we will give them a scholarship of $4,000 a year for four years. So, that's $16,000. That is for orphans. For most everybody else, we do have a scholarship program. That, that program is, we give out 100 scholarships a year. Usually, last year, we had like 256 people put in, so the, the chances of you getting the scholarship are pretty good. That is $1,500 a year for four years, or $6,000. We also, with that, it's not a typical scholarship where you get it your senior year in high school. If you do not receive it then, you can apply for it again, and again, and again. You can apply for this as a senior in college and get this. You would only get until you graduate with an undergraduate degree, but you are allowed to apply for that many different times if you don't receive it. If you do receive it, you will get that for four years. With that, we've given over $13 million worth of scholarships since that has started. We have quite a few funds and awards. Memorial Fund, if, if we have a section, which Douglas County does have an open section, if a party dies in the light of duty, we will give them, and they don't have an insurance policy, we will give them $2,000. They're surviving family members. We give them, if they are not a member, we will still give them $1,000. That is another benefit that we give. We have several other ones. We have a Hero Hall of Fame. If somebody puts their life in, on the line to save another, we give them a Hero's Hall of Fame, which is a certificate along with a pen, and they will, their name and pictures will be put in our magazine, which is called The Protector, which is sent out four times a year through the United States. We have Meritorious Service Award, which works like the Hero's Hall of Fame, but it doesn't quite involve the, it goes for something that you've done beyond, above and beyond the line of duty without putting your life on the line. There are several different other awards that we do give out, but all these are, I just want to make sure, these are something that we give out free to any of our members. All this is free to them. So, and to become a member, they only have to buy one policy. Policy could be, you can see our products, we have an accident policy, which pays on duty or off duty. We have a child's accident policy, which is a smaller version of the accident policy. It's just for your children. They'll have that. We have the cancer policy, where if you are diagnosed, we will get, give you $15,000 for that. The best part about that policy is if you keep that policy for 20 years and you are not diagnosed with, with cancer, you get all your money back. So, it's a, it's a great policy to have. You would never lose money on it. You're either going to get all your money back, or you're going to get $15,000. Along with that, we have life insurance, and we do carry annuities. So, I know I probably went over my time limit a little bit, but I just wanted to let you know, what we're asking for is just a payroll spot so that sheriff's deputies can buy these products and, and get the free benefits. All we need is that they would be able to get, to have it, have the premiums taken out of their check. And that would just look for that spot.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll jump into some dialogue here, starting with Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Warnock, thanks for the information. Do you, do you, you highlighted some additional benefits provided, and thank you for that information. Would, I'm asking you to put your, to make a guess, would, would our current supplemental provider have any heartburn? I'm asking you to make a guess. Would they say, would it affect their business model, or would it affect their revenue streams if supplemental insurance like that was implemented? So, we have a contract with a current provider. Do you think it would really, it's kind of a one-off? It wouldn't affect it much? Or what do you think they'd, I mean, they're not here, I don't think, but I was just curious. I mean, those additional benefits that you pointed out would be great, but this is also in my wheelhouse. I know that if there's a provider out there and it's cutting into their revenue, they're probably not going to be too excited about it. I just wanted you to opine, I guess.
Well, I, I know who you're talking about. We do, they are our competition, if you want to call it that, but in the same, same aspect, we, you can have both. If you have your current provider, you can have police and fire insurance also, and there is no, I mean, they wouldn't have to drop the other provider to have our, our products.
Because you did point out, you highlighted additional benefits that are not probably necessarily provided, or at least some one-offs that are not provided by the current. Quick question. Let's say a deputy left service. Are there any of these, are there any of these programs or any of these services that are portable? Let's say they left Douglas County, could they take them with them?
Yes.
Some of them?
All, all of them.
Okay. Good info. Is there, as long as they're, as long as they're paying the premium, and just so we're clear, if they go to another agency somewhere else that doesn't have the benefit implemented, doesn't matter, as long as they're paying the premium, it's portable, they can take it with them?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this presentation? Today, it's just for presentation purposes. Yep. All right. Thank you so much again, and we'll continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Next, we do have another presentation under Section 4, Item B, Presentation of Proposed Project to Maintain a Modern Integrated Software Platform for Property Valuation and Tax calculation. We have with us Treasurer Ewing and some friends.
Are you going to be able to scroll through it? All you have to do is use this mouse and roll down when you're ready.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Do I need to identify myself in all of that?
Sure, just in case.
John W. Ewing, Jr., Douglas County Treasurer. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present on our proposed property tax solution. I'll first give you a little bit of history on the project. We are looking at, right now, working with We are looking at, right now, working with a property tax collection system that is over 50 years old and is on the mainframe using COBOL with green screens and user interface. It's a very complex system and data from it is used by more than 16 departments and 600 users across the county and city. It has over 100 databases and over 300 programs and continues to get more complex as legislative bills drive changes. Due to this complexity, adherence to past, current and future legislative changes are at risk. And I'll share the one that we're currently dealing with, just so you all have a fresh reminder. During the special session of the legislature, they created LB 34, which changed the way that property taxes are calculated and distributed. DOT COM is having significant difficulties being able to adjust to that legislative change and spending a great deal of resources to address that. In my time as Treasurer over the last several years, there's been a number of proposed changes by the legislature during their normal sessions. When they do those, they ask for a fiscal note. And we've been able to put those changes off because of the significant cost of the fiscal notes. Over the last several years, we've had fiscal notes that total about $1.6 million. And we haven't had to do those because we've shown the cost to the citizens of Douglas County. Back in April of 2023, we actually began a process, and I made the Commissioners aware of the fact that we were going to start this process, but we didn't have a lot of discussion before we started it because we wanted to explore and see what was out there and bring a finalized project to the county Commissioners. We had vendor onsite demos. We visited Sarpy County Treasurer's Office to demo their vendor selection. We also spoke with NACO to see if they had a solution for us and looked at a number of other possibilities. In this process, there are only a small number of vendors that do what we're trying to do in terms of having a comprehensive approach for the Assessor Deeds Office and the Treasurer's Office. So as we looked at this, we had a lot of conversation with the Assessor Deeds Office as well. And they've been using Harris since 2014 and are happy with that vendor and see no reason that they should change from their current solution. So we then did a deep dive into that vendor. I might add that they are have been in business since 1975 and are on five continents. One of the discussions we had, one of the discussions we had with the Commissioners when we had the Finance Committee meeting was looking at whether or not we could sole source this. And we went through that process with purchasing to be able to get that approved, and we have gotten that approved. There are some strategic benefits to this project. One is the ability to significantly increase the efficiencies for both the Assessor and Treasurer's Office, moving tax processing off of the mainframe and reducing the risk of staffing issues. And with that, what I'm talking about is the fact that it is becoming more and more difficult to get mainframe programmers. And that puts the county at significant risk along with the age and the complexity of the system. In 2020, we actually had an issue where we could not collect on our property tax sale because of a programming change made where they had 100 programs that they had to touch and they missed one small part of it. And we were not able to collect until that was resolved. So that's an example. They were just learning the system because Sean Keenan, who had been with the county for 40 years, retired. And he had to, I believe, assist them as well. This also gives us the ability to react and incorporate legislative changes such as LB 34, because you would be talking about a modernized system that is cloud-based and significantly more flexible. It also would create a seamless customer experience between citizens who have to use the Assessor Deeds website and the Treasurer's website to get their business done. And part of what we've tried to do in the Treasurer's Office, and I know the Assessor Deeds has, is make sure we deliver great customer service to the citizens of Douglas County. I got it right this time. As I said, the county has been using this system since 2014 with an MSLA with the existing vendor Harris. What we are looking to do is, for the property tax collection portion of this, is have an amendment to that contract that would allow us to be able to proceed forward, have a new scope of work for some of the other parts of this in terms of purchase of Harris cloud hosting for both realware and collectware, and then purchase of professional services for implementation, integrations and customizations. When we started this project, we wanted to make sure we had the correct vendor. So the Treasurer's Office actually funded a discovery project at a cost of $175,000 because we felt that was money that would be beneficial to make sure we actually had the right organization to partner with. We have a target go-live date of September 2026. DOT COM will provide assistance through project management for requirements, discovery, creation of contracts, technical reviews of solutions, technical reviews of contracts, ongoing project management and technical assistance for implementation. If you look at the total cost of this project, it is $5,604,872. And the Treasurer's Office will have contributed by the encumbrance that we're going to do at the end of this year, $1.5 million of that amount. The Assessor Deeds Office. Okay, thank you. The Assessor Deeds Office will have escrowed or put aside through their funding $500,000 for a total of $2 million. We also have a projected income of $1.6 million through an investment we made in CDs before the interest rates went down and Treasury bills for $1.6 million total between those. With that, what you are, probably can go to the next one. With that, you're looking at an estimated shortfall of $2.1 million in terms of what the two offices can provide. There are some other advantages I can go through, and I will do that, but I just want to share some information with the Commissioners so you all understand that this can be paid for with the resources that are coming in through the Treasurer's Office. So as one example, we collect somewhere around $12.5 million a year in assessments or commissions for property tax collection. In the past year, we've made $25 million for the county in the Investment Committee that I set up. We also have almost $29 million that will be coming to the county, or came to the county from September of last year to September of this year through sales tax commissions that we get now. When I started as Treasurer, we got $75 a month for a total of $900 a year. We now got $28 million last year. So the Treasurer's Office has been a great partner in increasing the county's revenue. And we believe those revenues will help pay for this project because a lot of it is a matter of just timing. As money is due, we may not have that readily available in terms of the Treasurer's budget or the Assessor Deeds budget. The other thing I would say to you is this. I can't make you this promise because I don't know what the future holds, but there may be money available from each of the offices as well to offset this. The other thing is there's a possibility of saving $500,000 in the report writing. So the worst-case scenario is $2.1 million. It could be significantly less if the offices are able to provide additional funding as well as writing their reports. And so with that, I'll finish up by going through the last few advantages and answer any questions that you have. One of the things we believe technology does, and we've done a great deal with technology in the Treasurer's Office. I might add that we've done it all free to the county in terms of taxpayers over the years is this will allow them to do online processing of personal property, special assessments and tax liens, as well as offer a shopping cart for enhanced customer experience. And that's really important for those people who might own numerous properties. Instead of having to write a bunch of checks or instead of having to go in and do each property individually, they'll be able to do all of their properties at the same time. This also could lead to staffing reductions within the offices as well. As I've said before, I can't promise you that. I can tell you historically, when we moved from Oracle or from QuickBooks to Oracle, we actually saved two and a half staff members in the Treasurer's Office and our accounting department. These business processes save time and money. System changes for the law, when legislature makes changes, will be less challenging. Then we will also offer the citizens in our office real-time payments. So when you pay, it'll show that you paid, much like Amazon or other places where you go online and you pay instead of having to wait several days to find out if your payment was accepted. Obviously, there's less human area, human error, I should say, that would create a problem as well. So with that, I will answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. We'll jump into questions and comments, starting with Commissioner Morgan.
John, thank you very much. And we've had several meetings with your staff and county assessor on this issue and gone over some of the numbers. Would you state those numbers one more time, just for me?
For the income?
When you came into office, the amount you had coming in, that's an amazing number.
Sure, absolutely. When I came into the office as Treasurer, each county treasurer, no matter how much they collected in sales tax for the state of Nebraska, got $75 a month for a total of $900 a year. I went down to the legislature a couple of years ago and testified and got that increase to 1.5% of the sales tax collected. So we will have collected between September of last year and September of this year, We also did not have an investment committee. That was something I started as well. So we were dependent on just CDs and whatever we got from the bank account for investment income. This past year, September to September, that figure was $25,305,000.
Wow. Really?
Or $25,305,000.
Those numbers are really significant. And I thank you for your public service and going down to the legislature. Just wanted to make sure people are aware because it is a significant number. Thank you.
Sure. If you look at those two numbers, that's a significant amount of money.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, you're the page where you do project history. I didn't hear it because I was reading through this if you said this, but explain to me how how this will work if the Assessor is not planning to change their current solution? When you say their current solution, are you saying their system?
So the Assessor's Office already uses collectware or realware. What this will allow them to do is get their system more robust where they are going to be able to utilize it more fully because then they won't have to count on the mainframe to get information.
So this is consistent with what they, this is consistent with what they have? I said, this is consistent with what they have. It's not like, okay?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yes, this is what they have today, but they're not utilizing it fully because they still have to rely on the mainframe.
Okay. My, I guess, after that question, I mean, my only thing is looking through the numbers. The concern is, and I don't know if finance, I have to clear this out and really see how this plays out, is that after, what is this, this 24, 25 budget? Your '25, '26 and '27 number. I mean, my concern is, I don't know if we're able to spend that. I mean, you could have the money, but the fact that the legislature put that cap in, you all fall under the big, under the zero piece. So my only concern about this is you might have the money, but can we spend it? And so I don't know if that's something that needs to be looked at to some degree because when you all fall in that big pot with everybody else, I remember saying this when this bill was up, that we needed to have a carve-out for technology just because of all these increases. And being that we don't have that carve-out and you all fit into the bigger pot, I guess my bigger concern is, would we be able to spend over that limit because of the zero lead? So you could have the money, but you might be constrained about what you can spend. So I appreciate the presentation and look forward to see where it goes.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Capnall.
Thank you. John, I'd like to echo my colleague, Commissioner Morgan's sentiments about the remarkable job you've done in increasing revenue and the astute job you've done in investing county resources to bring more revenue in without any impact on the taxpayers of Douglas County. So that's super. I can't tell you how significant those numbers are, as Commissioner Morgan pointed out. And they need to be reiterated over and over because that's, from my perspective, kind of like found money. If you can go from a revenue source of $700 to $25 million, that's remarkable. So thank you for that. These things come on the back of Douglas County Initiative 50 years ago that my father led to bring computers to county government. These computers are those computers.
Yeah.
And I guess after 50 years, it might be time to look at that. I have computers all over the place. And if I get 24 months out of them before some kind of an upgrade, I'm feeling like I do, I do pretty good. So it seems like your research is on point in terms of these upgrades. And the revenues that you've accrued, you know, in anticipation of this, will offset, it looks like maybe more than half of the...
It'll be pretty close to half.
Okay. The legislature did something with our budgets, as you've heard. Nobody knows the fiscal impact of that on Douglas County. I've asked repeatedly from our finance people and finance people in Lincoln, what's the fiscal impact on Douglas County? No one knows. No one can give us a number. So we don't know if it's a negative impact, if it's a neutral impact. I doubt if it's a positive impact, but nobody knows. it's a neutral impact. I doubt if it's a positive impact, but nobody knows. So, we hope for the best, but we'll plan for the worst. That's a question that should be resolved, I would think, in the relatively near future. I mean, it's not impossible for them to determine what the fiscal impact of this legislation that they passed six months ago will be. But when we do, we can get a better idea of how this portion that, it seems to me, would be a couple million dollars?
Yes, that's worst-case scenario.
Okay.
That's if the departments don't have the ability to encumber future dollars, because I'm not going to promise you that they do. There are a number of things in play where you can't predict the future.
That's true. And I've got to hand it to you, you've really done your homework on this. And the work that you've done, both in encumbering and investing and through the sales tax collection thing, are absolutely remarkable. First-class administration. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And John, I'll echo that. I mean, you guys have done some really good work on this, and it's pretty clear, I would, I would think, to most people, based on the legacy systems that we have in place, that stuff like this needs to happen. The other thing, I've known you for quite a while. You're, you have an inner peace that I wish I had. And you've given this presentation like three times, so the inner peace just keeps exuding. I don't have that inner peace, and you're going to hear that now. But it wouldn't, it shouldn't surprise you, because you and I talked about it. The entity's on a mill levy. The county and the property tax revenue that we actually, that we actually get, that Douglas County actually gets, is thirteen percent of the, of the property tax revenue generated.
Sure.
The city gets approximately twenty percent, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less, depending on what they do with the mill levy. Schools get about fifty-five percent. The rest go to the NRD, Metro Community College, the ESU, fire districts, the Omaha-Douglas Building Commission, the Regional Transit Authority, SIDs. There's about thirty of them or so, and then the learning community. Now, they're paying for operating costs for the, for the assessor and the treasurer's office. The question that I have, and again, it shouldn't surprise you, because you and I have talked about it, this is particularly a capital expense. Can these entities sit down with us, the assessor, the treasurer, somebody, and say, this capital expense is different, we're going to inject a little bit more money into this process, because this is a fifty-five-year-old legacy system. We're going to run into problems if it stays in place. Would they be, would they be willing? Have we tried? I mean, are, because they are funding operating costs. Now, we're talking about capital costs. So, is there, is there a chance for that? I mean, I'd be happy to join you.
Sure.
You could, you could be the good cop, I'll be the bad cop. That's my question.
Sure.
I mean, do you think we're open to that type of dialogue?
The problem I see, potentially, is they will be in the same position as the county in terms of trying to figure out how this legislation will impact them. The second thing I see is, they are going to rightfully point out the amount that we receive in commissions. If you look at what we're talking about, we're talking about potentially two-point-one million dollars, kind of spread over three fiscal years. In that time, we will collect pretty close to thirty-nine million dollars in commissions. So, that's the issue, I, two issues I see.
Right, good point. But, but again, from an accounting principle standpoint, and Lori's, Lori's behind me, and she's probably going, oh, now he's talking accounting principles. That's a little bit of an issue. We're staring at a general fund outlay of two-point-one million. The other thing is, and I don't have any reason to disagree with you on this, we just do not know how much of money is going to be encumbered. We put black numbers down in here, but we don't know how much money's going to be encumbered in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. We can guess, based on historical knowledge, and our attitude and our ability to actually spend money that's being encumbered or clawing it back, right? I hate that term. I don't think I'll ever use it again. To implement, I'm done.
That's time. Do you want another round, Commissioner Friend?
Sure. So, can I address that really quickly?
Yes, I want another round.
However you all want to do it.
Okay. Yeah, another round.
John, John, go ahead.
Okay. One of the things I'm not doing is, I'm not projecting years from now. When I tell you we're going to encumber five hundred thousand for this fiscal year, I'm committing to you all that we will do the same type of management and leadership that we've done for eighteen years and make that happen. But as far as the future, I'm saying that could happen, but I can't guarantee that. So, I'm guaranteeing this year, but I can't guarantee anything beyond the next eight or nine months in terms of encumbrances. We can guarantee that we are going to get the one-point-six million that I talked about, because we've already invested that as additional revenue. As we talked to Lori, we talked about looking at how we could potentially increase revenue.
Okay. That's a fair point. When you go to your next steps on page nine, am I, so do you think I'm off the beam, and it's okay if I am, do you think I'm off the beam when we say identifying county funding to close funding gaps? Is it, my final question, I guess, remains, is there a way we could sit down with some of these entities and say, you know, let us talk about the funding gaps that the county has, and let's, let's see if you guys would, you know, be interested in coming up with an MOU or something that's going to increase the potential to mitigate the cost, right?
If the chair of the county board or the finance committee were willing to do that, I certainly would be willing to sit down with them as well. I think they're going to be in the same position, potentially, but I think the other concern is, if you wait until we can have those meetings, have those discussions, I don't know how quickly we could potentially get them to agree or disagree. And we run the risk of delaying this project potentially another year, because when we look at September of 2026, what we're looking at is the workflow for the assessor deeds office, and when it's the best time for them to make this major shift. And then also looking at the treasurer's office, and when is the best time for them to make this major shift as well? Because I can't speak for the assessor deeds office, but I can tell you, we have property tax collection in March. I don't think anybody wants us trying to implement this system in March. We have the tax sale. We also have property tax collection in July, and we have things where we're still trying to get last-minute people to pay at the beginning of August, when we're sending out notices and things like that. So, we really don't want to implement it then either. In November, December, that's the time when we're starting to notify people of what their property tax payment is going to be, and some people start paying in December. So, my concern is, if we delay it, you only have so much of a window, and September just is truly the best time. So, it would be potentially September of 2027.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
I want to tell you that I really, meeting with your staff, you do have excellent people, and I should-
Absolutely.
-thank them, along with you, for the good job that-
I should point out, I hired about ninety percent of them.
Well, I'm not sure you deserve the credit for that, but we'll, but they do do an excellent job. My thought is, what Commissioner Friend said about at least meeting with them, I don't want to delay it. I think, and I've talked to the assessor's office too about this, and the importance of it in our collection and that process, but I think we ought to look at who we should meet with. And I, for one, would be glad to go with your team to at least make them aware of what's going on and see if we can get their participation for some help in this matter. And I'll depend on you to say, maybe we start with some of the schools, because they take a big part of it, and go from there. And I don't want to speak for our finance director, Lori Persch, but maybe it'd be helpful if we went and my friend maybe to go along with us, to at least talk to them about it as we're going through the process moving forward. And I'll leave that to you to-
Sure.
-correct whatever I've said, but I think it's important that we start that process sooner than later, meaning in the next weeks ahead, not months ahead.
Sure. And I'm just looking at the logistics of five school districts, city of Omaha, the SIDs potentially, the NRD and other, so I don't know where we would draw that line, but I just see it as being a huge number of meetings and potentially delaying. That's, that's my concern. Now, if we were to move forward with the project and then have those meetings, I think that might be the more effective way to do it. It's just my honest opinion.
Yes, I agree with you. That's why I said, we start the process moving forward, because we don't have that time, but at the same time, we can start to meet, whether it's two weeks from now or whatever it might be, with some, to see if there's a chance we can get participation.
Sure. The other thought I have is, I'm not trying to stretch the law beyond the intent, but I know that law enforcement, the 9-1-1 center, and others utilize this system. So, I don't know if they would fall, if this would make that fall into that category or not. I just throw it out there for the attorneys or others to look at, but I'm just looking at what needs to be done, quite honestly, is we have got to get a new property tax collection system.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Very briefly on my end, thank you, and thank you, John, or Treasurer Ewing, for the presentation today. Much appreciated. I went ahead and put it on the agenda today as presentation only. It can loop back around soon for action, but since it is a big-ticket item, I wanted to make sure we had good discussion on it and that we can bring it back in the very near future, if so desired by the board. So, with that, I would encourage us to follow up with Treasurer Ewing and his team to really understand the financials of it. I think you have a calculation to get to where we need to be if we move forward. So, please follow up with Treasurer Ewing on those details, so the board can move in whatever direction it feels comfortable moving in the near future here. I do want to circle back to Commissioner Friend's comment on the partners and whether they'd be interested in throwing in some resources. There is a meeting this afternoon, Commissioner Friend, where you could test those waters if you so desired. It's a handful of partners that will be at West Side. I welcome you to do that, though I do kind of would lean in Treasurer Ewing's guesstimation and sentiments, because they are charged a commission for us to do our job of tax collection, and they pay us, Douglas County, to do that job. It's one-point-five percent, you said, is of their-
The commissions vary, but the total is almost thirteen million dollars a year.
A year, yeah. So, essentially, they're already paying in for us to do our job, and now we're saying internally that, to do, continue doing our job, we need an enhanced system. So, I would probably guess the hesitation there as well, but definitely welcome anybody testing those waters. With that being said, again, we'll circle back in this conversation in the near future. Today, it is presentation only. I do want to open it up for further question or comment from the public. Larry, go ahead.
Good morning. Larry Sor, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Thank you for the presentation. The short version of my protest, I guess, is that it shouldn't cost so much to collect my dollars. If you didn't spend so much, you wouldn't have to collect so many dollars. End of story on that. But I want to take a moment to also protest that here we are at the end of the year, and you'll be starting new agendas. The election is a week away, and you don't have another meeting, so I need to say this. I did send an email or two last night that I want to insert to the record. I'll give it to Dan. You've successfully avoided giving we, the people, at a presentation on your agendas. For a whole year, we've been asking.
Larry, I need you to stay on topic.
Thank you. Here we go again. Pay attention to the emails I sent, and pay attention to what's going on in South Dakota.
Thank you for-
Because it also happens here. Thank you much.
Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Chair, can I add one more?
Is it in response to Larry, Mr. Ewing? No, just kidding. Go ahead.
No, I, my chief deputy just reminded me of something that I forgot to say to you all. If we delay this, the cost could potentially go up. So, that's another factor to consider if we have to delay and go into 2027.
Got it. Thank you, Treasurer Ewing. Yeah, I encourage communication both ways. If there's more that you want to send us, please send us more info. Likewise, commissioners should feel free to follow up. Any other comment or question on this presentation? If not, we'll conclude the presentation, and we'll move forward in our agenda. There is nothing under public hearings today, so we'll jump to Section Six, Committees, Discussion and Action. First, we have Finance Committee, Budget Report as Presented. We also have Item Three, Resolution Authorizing an Award of a hundred thousand dollars to CASA. Is there any comments, my commissioner or otherwise, on this item? Otherwise, we can take a motion. Motion by Friend, second by Borgson. All right, anything else? Otherwise, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump to Human Resources. We have Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as Presented. We also have a Need for Executive Session for the Purposes of Personnel and Litigation. Do we have a motion, a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
It's still being ninety.
Yes, upstairs. Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
The Board should now go into Executive Session for the Purpose of Personnel and Litigation, and we are still upstairs. and we are still upstairs.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn outside of room 903 by Commissioner Kavanaugh, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. The motion passed six to zero. The meeting adjourned at 11:03 a.m.